In all decisions made by us, we'll always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. I know Alderman Sullivan is traveling for business. He won't be joining us this evening. Also joining us is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Well, first I wanted to point your attention to some of the items on the agenda tonight for first reading related to the redevelopment of the Mohawk Tannery site. Many of you were—some of you will remember that this was an operating tannery for quite a period of time, and that when it was operational, the stench that infected the surrounding neighborhoods at times, especially during the summer, was just unbearable. And at one time I did actually go into the place, and it was like going back to the Middle Ages. I mean, it was unbelievable. But it eventually closed and has been polluted as a result of the—the what they call pools of—the tannery sludge that were left, the lagoons, and has been that way for decades. Now, as a result of the work of the EPA with support from the state but also our city staff, Tim Cummings, Matt Sullivan, Celia Leonard, and others, we are near the end of negotiating and finalizing the agreement that will enable us to go forward with a cleanup and redevelopment of that site. The EPA has informed us that they're ready to go. They're at 100% design regarding the cleanup. They still have their money. And assuming that we go forward and finalize these last items, which you will see and which will be referred to committee, we think that the cleanup can begin this summer and can be completed within fairly short order after that. And once the cleanup is done, then the site will be redeveloped for housing, a certain proportion of it being affordable apartments. Next, Madam President, I did want to mention one of the things that the Finance Committee is working on, and of course, the members will—on that committee will be familiar with this. We are looking at what under SERF, which is Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, the annual purchase of equipment for various departments, we're looking at how to—how much could be saved by bringing forward, meaning purchasing some of the larger items, especially some larger public works vehicles, and some smaller ones as well. If we make those purchases early with money we have on hand, how much we can save as opposed to waiting until the fall. We're going to get a final report at the next meeting of the Finance Committee, but I think it's fair to say that the savings could be considerable, and the committee will be looking at the details, but I think in the end we'll find that by making these purchases earlier, we can save quite a bit of money. Next, Madam President, I did want to mention, just in terms of the morale of the community, that I did meet with some immigrants recently. These are all legal residents of the United States, legal residents, about their feelings and concerns and really fears regarding what is happening with the deportations that are taking place in a very visible manner in the United States. And, you know, they're very familiar with what's going on, like the situation with Mr. Abrego Garcia, having been sent to a gulag, basically, in El Salvador by mistake. Supreme Court rules that he should be brought back, but no one does that. They say that many people they know are not going to school, are not going to work, even though they're legal residents, because they are afraid they'll get picked up and sent somewhere like that, or Guantanamo, somewhere by mistake, and they won't be able to get back. So these actions which we see at the federal level are having an effect on people right here in Nashua, who—some of whom have lived here quite a while and are contributing members of the community. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention another thing on the agenda, which I wanted to thank the Morin family for, and that is R. 25163. This is on for a first reading, but the Morin family, who have donated a lot of money to improve Robey Park, make various—very significant improvements down at Robey Park, have now agreed to donate $150,000 for improvements, specifically a water pad—the activate—the activation of a water pad at Park Social at the corner of Central and Pine Street. The $150,000 that they are contributing will be supplemented with some city money that was appropriated, as well as hopefully some CDBG money, and we will be able to activate a water feature there, which will, I think, be a great addition for kids in the neighborhood, particularly the kids living right across the street in the Monahan Manor. But the Morin family has been very generous with this contribution, with others, in really helping to improve the recreational facilities here in Nashua. And I, you know, wanted to just thank them very much for all that they've done. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Lopez.
First, I'd like to say that literally every topic that you say, I really appreciate you commenting on. The Mohawk Tannery is a very important effort. It was the first issue that had brought to me by a constituent, Sandy Bownap. It was, I think, one of the topics that we talked about in our first meeting together ever, and I'm really glad to see that it's coming to the point where it really is finally getting cleaned up. Development's exciting, and the opportunity for more housing in Nashua is exciting, but I think the cleanup is critical to residents in that neighborhood. There's a wide range of health issues that aren't specifically correlated, but could be correlated to some of the environmental hazards in the area, and I think it's just better for everybody if that area gets cleaned up. Regarding immigrants in Nashua, I think we are definitely taking the wrong course at the federal level. I think immigrants have always been a really important part of our nation, as well as our community, and it's something we celebrate. And it's something—the idea of coming to a new place and being welcomed and then building your life here is as fundamental to American values as anything I can think of. And it's appalling that we can have people wearing hoods and—with no supervision or oversight or accountability—making gross mistakes that affect human rights, and nobody's able to really do anything about it. I think, as a municipal leader, I identify the immediate problem as the state leadership. We need leadership that isn't going to try to support the tyrants and undermine the local communities. I appreciate you meeting with everybody. I know there's no easy answer, but I think definitely we need to look this problem in the eye and find those solutions. And then, finally, I think the water park should have been a splash pad in the first place. I'm very grateful to the family that is donating towards it, and the effort and the traction underway. I hope this project can be moved forward as soon as possible because Ward Four is specifically one of the wards that doesn't have any kind of access to a pool without walking to other areas. And there's a lot of neighborhood—neighbors and families that would definitely appreciate, you know, a place to cool off during the hotter days. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Alderman Thibodeau. Tebow, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I mean, I think it's completely disgusting that we, you know, legal immigrants who've committed no crimes have to worry about, you know, their living, being here, being in the city, working, going to school. I mean, if you're someone that voted for this, I guess you're getting what you wanted. And I just think it's scary because what will happen next, right? You know, they got rid of Pride Month, so maybe they're—they're coming after the LGBTQ community next, right? Where does it stop? They're coming. They're coming for you unless you're exactly like them. And a question to the mayor, and it's more through the—to the president. I think—I don't know if it's rumor, but I heard that there's a restaurant in West Pearl that might have had to close because their staff was concerned about this, and they self-deported. I don't know if that's true. Can—I think it's where the—in the area where the Modern used to be. Is—any truth to that?
Let's call the [inaudible].
I have not heard—I haven't heard that, but you're referring to the Mexican restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still open?
Well, I will—that's—I haven't—I haven't heard that, but I can't say that it's not true, but I will definitely check it out.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, sorry. I'm trying to write here. First off, I'd like to mention that the Mohawk Tannery has been in the news for the EPA cleanup, so it's getting a little bit of press. And I'd like to thank the mayor, Director Cummings, and Director Sullivan for all of their hard work to making all that happen. I think without all that hard work, and also, as part of that, the—one of the groups that don't get any of the credit is our legal department. They worked really hard to make all of that happen as well. So, thank you for everybody's hard work in getting all of that to happen. It really was a joint effort. I know our legal department really had to pour over lots and lots of documents to get everything, all those Ts crossed and Is dotted, and they don't get enough credit either. So, as far as like the immigrant, I agree with what the mayor has said and my colleagues have said. I can tell you there's even fear in my ward, just something as simple as trying to fill out the applications for something like PAL. Legal immigrants are fearful to fill out that form, just so that they could have services to be able to use PAL, because they don't know what those forms are going to be used for. So—and that's a shame. Or to be able to use the YMCA or anything else like that, pre-services for their children, which means the kids are out on the street and up to whatever. And now we're starting to see things happen. So—and I want to thank Director Cummings and his group for bringing the SERF proposal forward, because I think that's a great idea. I think we still have to work through a few things, and Alderman Clemmons kind of mentioned a few of those things, I think, that we have to work through, whether or not we go with electric or whether we go with that. We have to get some of those proposals, which is why we didn't approve it at that moment. But I think it's a good idea. If we can save money, I'm all for it, and I look forward to the next finance meeting so we can pour over all that, and hopefully we can move those—those purchases forward. So, a couple more weeks, and let's see what we can do.
Alderman Dowd.
Just want to address the R. 25163, which is the donation of the $150,000. That is a great thing, and I'm sure it will go forward, but some of the directors asked me to withdraw the resolution for tonight's meeting for first reading because they need to get the—all the funding sources lined up before it comes forward, and there's no rush relative to the approval. So, I will be making a motion later to withdraw Resolution R. 25163. It'll be brought up at another meeting.
All set? Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Alderman meetings of April 22, 2025, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication has been received from Sam D'Arfey, AICP Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on Resolution R. 25-140 relative to tax-dated property auction.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Well, just for the record, I wanted to note that Alderman Clemmons arrived at 7:37. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding tax increment finance development program, clock tower bridge removal, and retaining wall construction.
Alderman Cle.
I'd like to motion to accept, place on file, and award a contract, base bid plus add alternate A, for the demolition and removal of an existing steel beam bridge and replaced by a new retaining wall that is an extension of the existing river wall, which will allow the drainage inlet to be backfilled and a road constructed in its place with E.D. sweat in the amount of $735,290. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, Factory Street Improvements, 81 Capital Outlay Improvements.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
I think to the mayor, I guess he would be familiar, I hope. Where's the bridge? It's not the footbridge, and it's not the actual Water Street Bridge, right?
Correct. This is—this is behind Clock Tower. If you look carefully, there is a—an opening below the sidewalk where they used to run the water after it had gone through the mills. And that is rotten, and in order to—and it needs to be done to enable the fire department to get back there. Once the Water Street—once work begins on the Water Street ramp, they will need that to make sure they have access to the whole Clock Tower area. So, the bridge is—as part of the Riverfront Project needs to be rebuilt.
Is it an active bridge, or are you talking about the footbridge?
If you walk or drive behind the parallel—you know, behind Clock Tower, parallel with the river, you go over the bridge.
So, it is the footbridge that we—I thought we just fixed?
No.
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 Wooden plank.
Alderman Clemmons, do you—
I can clarify. It—it—it's on the fire road that's behind Clock Tower. So, you may not even notice it if you walk there.
It's the wooden slats that you go over?
Yes.
Okay. I knew that—I knew that was there. I didn't realize it was on a bridge, but all right.
Yeah. Madam President, if I may, Alderman Lopez, it's a wooden planked bridge. And when I used to go over it with the fire truck, I held my nose in case we went down. So, it's high time that it needs to be replaced.
Okay. Well, some people might use it as a Segway park or whatever.
So, you've heard the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding tax increment finance development program, construction engineering services for the Clock Tower Bridge Project.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a contract for construction engineering services with Hoyle Tanner and Associates in the amount of $59,883. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, Factory Street Improvement, 53 Professional and Technical Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, wildlife management contract.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year cooperative service agreement between the City of Nashua and the USDA Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services, for an ongoing gull management project in the amount of $406,412.20. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Fund, 55 other services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, water quality testing.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract amend for water quality testing services at Nashua landfill sites for the Solid Waste Department with Haley Ward Incorporated in the amount of $126,000. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Funds, 55 other services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, single stream recycling.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award a three-year contract for the transportation and process of the City of Nashua's single stream recyclables with Casella Recycling LLC in the amount not to exceed $1.2 million—not to—sorry, not to exceed 400—400 per year. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste Fund slash 55 other services.
Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, integration of UKG Workforce Telestaff Migration Services.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion to accept, place on file, and award a multi-year contract with Mosaic Consulting Group for the integration of UKG, formerly known as Coronus. Workforce Telestaff Migration in the amount of $160,000. Funding will be through Capital Improvements, SERF, and Info Technology Consulting Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was accidentally omitted from the agenda.
Communication has been received from Stephen A. Bolton, Corporation Counsel, regarding Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Alderman hereby ratifies and confirms its appointment of Laurie Wilshire to the Board of Directors of the Penichuk Corporation. And Madam President, can I speak very briefly on this?
Yes.
I think most of us have been following what's been going on, but to me and myself personally, and I think it's shared by many members of this board, some of the members on the Board of Penichuk, our engineers and other—come from other walks, and they're picked on their expertise with water. But where's our representation as members of the Board of Alderman? We, as members of the Board of Alderman, represent the people of Nashua, and is that duly represented within the Penichuk Board? So, therefore, by voting for this, hereby kind of corrects that, by putting President Laurie Wilshire on that particular board, will have—give us, and perhaps maybe in the future, a seat at the table at the Penichuk Water Corporation, be able to say, particularly with this organization, they're digging up streets, they're replacing water mains and everything else, who better to know how much municipal funds going into that type of project than somebody from the board? So, therefore, I highly recommend that you vote for this to give some authority. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I just—I hope I—I—I'm a little bit quick. When this all came to be, I was one of the advocates of having someone from the Board on the—the Board of Penichuk. And I know way back when it was decided that no one from the city would be on the Board, but things have changed since then, and I think it's time for the Board to have a voice, more than one voice, because the mayor also gets to have a pick as to someone who's on there. And that was part of this whole change. When we went through the—the whole change of how Penichuk was going to be doing this, and they—they put all of their assets together and so on, it was part of that whole negotiation process. And that's how this all came to be. We changed the way that they were put together and so on. So, I think it's time that the—the city had more of a voice at it, and not just citizens from the city on the—on the Board. It's actually the—the city itself being as part of the Board, and I think the best choice is the president, someone who was there from the beginning. You are, Madam President, the best choice to be on the Board, and I think we made a good choice from the beginning. So, thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my colleagues. I'd like a roll call.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Alderman Juddy.
So, I'm—I, you know, I appreciate what the previous speakers have said, but I'm under the impression that we've already—we already done this. We've already amended the Penichuk bylaws. We already provided for a representative from the Board of Alderman, and I think we already appointed you, or ratified or approved your appointment. And I think what we're doing tonight is just, you know, covering, you know, some base. Maybe the Corporation Counsel could explain what we're actually doing tonight.
Attorney Bolton.
I think that's fairly accurate. Back in February, I think it was the meeting of the 25th of February, President Wilshire was confirmed, without objection, as the Board's appointment to the Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors. Questions have been raised about that. I'm recommending that this vote be taken out of an excess of caution, making it crystal clear, assuming the vote is favorable, that it is the will of this Board, that President Wilshire be the appointee of the Board of Alderman to the Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Juddy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm going to abstain.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, one abstention.
Thank you. That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for amendment to petition for street discontinuance, a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway.
There being no objection, I will accept the petition for amendment to petition for street discontinuance, a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway, refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Nashville City Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, June 11, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Alderman for Wednesday, June 11, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the President of the Board of Alderman, Keefe Auditorium, Dan O'Donnell, new appointment, term to expire May 13, 2027, 49 Cobbett Lane, Hollis, New Hampshire, 03049. Shawn Smith, new appointment, term to expire May 1, 2028, Nashua High School South, 38 Riverside, Riverside Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Appointments by the mayor, Nashua Center for the Arts Board of Trustees, Amber Morgan, reappointment, term to expire May 13, 2030, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Abdallah J. Minkara, reappointment, term to expire April 30, 2030, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Cultural Connections Committee, Bernadette Melton Plant, reappointment, term to expire April 30, 2028, 41 Parish Hill Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the April 14, April 17, April 21, April 30, and May 5. Budget Review Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 15, Planning and Economic Development Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 16, 2025 Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 21, 2025 Human Affairs Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 23, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 22, 2025 Joint Meeting with the Board of Public Works and Committee on Infrastructure, be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Cole Morgan, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, with a term to expire April 22, 2028, to the Downtown Improvements Committee. Do not see Cole here. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Keefe Auditorium.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Alicia Gregg, 4 East Brick Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire May 13, 2028, to the Keefe Auditorium. Oath of office will be administered at a later date.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Natalie Overcash-Lucci, 74 Weathersfield Road, Nashua, with a term to expire June 12, 2028, and the new appointment of Andrew Lucci, 74 Weathersfield Road, Nashua, with a term to expire May 13, 2028, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee. Are they here this evening? Please come forward to take the oath of office. Come right up to the attorney, right up here.
They've been waiting very patiently. They asked if it happened right away.
You each raise your right hand, please. Do you each solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire so help you God. Thank you.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-140, amended relative to tax-dated property auction.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to amend R-25-140 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure. And may I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. This is something that I think all of us kind of, in a way, hate to do. But when you force against the wall, when people are in arrears, and when you and our citizens are paying their property taxes, what teeth do the, does the dog have in order to make sure everybody conforms? We can't pass out the gold stars on the forehead, but we can go after situations where they are in arrears. Some of these properties that you see on the list have been in arrears for quite a long time, and it's not like the city cannot take a property for two years. So it's been over the two years. You know, some are, I think, up to six or, you know, even greater. So therefore, this recommendation has been brought in with the actual properties. And also, too, the good thing to it, if they, the family or his or somebody decides to change their mind, they can, right up until the last minute, go up to the city and try to renegotiate this. So this is not really completely final. There are other options that are available to these people, and I wish that they would take it, you know, and try to make good. So therefore, looking for your recommendation and your support in voting this bill. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion, Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I always go back and forth on these ones, but can we just do roll call? That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah. Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Question through you to the Chairman of Infrastructure. So the addresses that we see removed via the amendment, have they paid back the tax? Is that what it is?
That's what, I can't say with a high degree of certainty, but generally, that's what happens. See, once they get the notification, and they do get notification, you know, and they're, you know, and at the last minute, the family says, oh, we got to do something, and they do, you know, so they move it right along. I mean, the City of Nashua, I hate to coin the phrase, but we are not in the business of real estate, you know. So we kind of like to have the slate clean. So this is the attempt to do so. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. To echo some of what my colleague at large had mentioned, when we sat at the meeting, excuse me, in infrastructure, since then, some have already been taken off of this list, which I'm glad to see. And when we're just looking at this list alone, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 that have come off. And as he stated, there could be more that could come off, and I truly do hope more will come off. It's hard for all of us to vote, to take anybody's, anybody's home, but in truth, some of these may be for some properties where the people have passed. And I know at least one of these that is the case. And there's, the city can't make any money on this. I want the public to know this. The city can't sell these for millions of dollars, and now suddenly, the city has millions of dollars. The city can only get the back taxes, the cost for getting the money, to get the money. That's it. The state will not allow us to take anything more than that. So taking is only for that. And Attorney Bolton, if I've made any mistakes in anything I've said, please correct me.
None of which I am aware.
Okay, thank you. That is what we were told at the meeting. We are not allowed to take any more than what it's cost us. We can only recoup that. So for anybody who's listening, the city is not making any money on this. So we are not trying to be heartless. We are not trying to do anything like this. It's something that we basically, and by law, we have to do this. That is the other thing. We are obligated to do this. So, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I had generally in the past been opposed to doing these types of activities, seizing property, but I will have to say, since Treasure Enright joined the city and has spoken with such eloquence on the matter, and such a breadth of expertise, I feel very confident that this is being done in the best interest of the city.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. A question that I'll just throw out there, and I'm not sure if anybody has that answer off the top of their head, but when we approved the contract for these auctions in the Finance Committee, we got more favorable terms compared to, I think it was two years ago, because of the amount of properties that we were auctioning off. Is that still the case even though we are minimizing, or taking off addresses at this point? To anybody's knowledge, would that change?
It doesn't change the terms.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. By roll call. Anything else? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Juddy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-25-140 as amended.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-140 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-25-154, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into contracts with Sohegan Valley Transportation Collaborative, Nashua Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-154.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Resolution 25-154 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-25-054, amended, authorizing stop signs at the intersections of Westwood Drive and Wilmington Street and Westwood Drive and Weathersfield Road.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to amend O-25-054 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee of Infrastructure. May I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
The request was made, actually through me, to Alderman Sullivan, where he is the Ward 9 representative, to put a stop sign on Westwood. There's already one on the east of Wilmington Street, and this would be one on the west. What is the thought of this? Is Wilmington Street is a hill, and wintertime, it's sometimes, the plows have been very, very good, and the city has given it one of those, you know, priorities for a street for plowing, but you're still on a hill. So this will stop the traffic on Westwood and allow you to clear that intersection. If you should stop, and you haven't got your good tires on, you're stuck on the hill, which we have seen many times. So this just allows the flow. Is it going by the regular type of traffic pattern? Not really, but according to, like, talking to Mr. Hudson, which is our city engineer on it, it is, fits within the parameters of extenuating circumstances, the need that has merit in order to pass. So I hope that you will, you know, follow with the Committee of Infrastructure. When it was first presented, it included other things. We knocked that off. All we want is one stop sign on the westbound side of Weathersfield. Thank you.
Discussion? Motion is to amend. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-25-054 as amended.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Order 25-54 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-159, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement, and approving amended master concept plan redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez, you're already on there.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee, Planning Board, and schedule an Aldermanic Planning and Economic Development Committee public hearing on Thursday, June 5, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-160, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for a discontinued portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way and the execution of an initial lease thereof, redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee and the Planning Board.
First reading of R-25-161, authorizing an amendment to Resolution R-72-75, laying out common sewers as it pertains to the redevelopment of land in the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment, VMPR Ovalay District.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first
Come on, die the sewers.
Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Planning Board.
First reading of R-25-162, authorizing entering into a pledge agreement with the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority in connection with a bond not to exceed $3,500,000 per amount to be issued by the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-163, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of a donation of $150,000 for park improvements at Park Social and renaming the park Jeff Morin Park.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Resolution R-25-163, as I explained earlier in the meeting.
Motion is to withdraw. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries.
First reading of R-25-164, relative to the acceptance of a scoreboard for Wajoey Field donated to the city by the Greater Nashua Little League.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-165, authorizing the mayor to enter into a radio communications agreement between the City of Nashua and the Town of Merrimack.
Additional sponsors: Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-166, authorizing the City of Nashua to join in the granting of an easement for the benefit of MAP 62, Lot 100, and adjacent land in connection with the redevelopment of the former Mohawk Tannery site.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Planning Board.
First reading of R-25-167, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a contract with VaxCare to administer vaccines and receive an administrative fee.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances. Compared to general public comment, we have one person signed up, Sonya Prince.
Hi, my name is Sonya Prince, 49 Tufts Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I was here, actually, to give you guys a compliment and thanking you for being supportive of the Warming Center. I was a volunteer this year on Elm Street, and I can't begin to explain how impactful this is for people who are homeless and struggling daily. On my last shift in April before we closed, I asked everyone, where are you going tomorrow? Because that was a concern of mine. of mine. Some had tents, others didn't know. We had suggestions, but some shelters lock you in until 7:00 AM. And most addicts, if you know, not all of them are addicts, but you know, they can't last that long and they have no options. So it was nice, at least for the wintertime. Bobby Bagley and her team spoke to every person to make sure they had a place to consider going the next day, which was very comforting. The people we see at the Warming Center struggle with addiction and health issues. Others are dealing with a divorce, a financial struggle, or a job loss. Police are generally glad that we have a Warming Center since they get less calls through the night for wandering homeless people trying to keep warm or possibly disturbing the public. Example, three years ago, a friend of mine found a homeless person sleeping in her car as she was driving her son to school. Surprise. So my neighbor found a homeless person sleeping behind his shed. Rest is hard for homeless people because they get moved around all the time, often get wet on bad weather days, and others steal their few possessions they have when they try to rest or nap. Example, a cart, a bag, a cellphone, a wallet, or a blanket gets stolen and makes their days much more difficult. They're often walking most of the day, so they arrive exhausted. At the Warming Center, every person checks in their bags and have access to them at any time. At the Warming Center, these citizens can finally relax for a while without fear of anyone stealing their possessions while they're in the bathroom, getting a cup of coffee, chatting with friends, or taking a peaceful nap. On my four-hour volunteer shift, I chat with everyone. Bobby Bagley preaches kindness, caring, and empathy to all the volunteers. Many get mistreated all day long. It can be exhausting. Some need advocacy. As we get to know each other, I often get to learn what their struggles are and leave notes to their caseworkers or more help, or if more help is needed. A few ask me for help finding detox or methadone clinics, so I'd pass it on. Others are terrified but still want the help. They may not make it on the first or second try, but sometimes they make it on the third try. And some make it on the first try. So that's less people on the streets. With the right people around that they trust and encourage them and be by their side, we often get
Thirty seconds.
Make an impact. The more people we connect with, the higher the chance to get a better, healthy future. I hope there's a way to find a place that we can keep people safe at night and all year round. I hate to say it, but sometimes I feel we treat animals better than humans. So keep in mind, this is somebody's brother, sister, uncle, son, daughter. And the summers get hot, 90 to 104 degrees. Think about people with asthma, heart conditions. That just makes all those conditions much, much worse. So if there's a way that we can chat about having a place all year round, I'd be all for it, and I'd help find volunteers and et cetera, et cetera. But I hope that's a possibility in the future. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start over here tonight.
I'm good.
Alderman Lopez.
First, thanks to Ms. Prince for volunteering for the warming station. That was obviously a challenging endeavor to stand up. We had a presentation on it, or yeah, presentation yesterday at Human Affairs. There is a plan at least already in place to stand one up starting next year in December. Honestly, I'd love it to be a little bit earlier. I know I don't want to drive Director Bagley up the wall, but it does get cold around Thanksgiving. And Thanksgiving weekend is particularly the longest weekend for no available services because Thanksgiving, the Friday, and it's a forty-weekend. So every step that we can take, we should take. There's always going to be more that we can do, and that can be a deterrent. People can throw up their hands and say, well, we're never going to end homelessness, so let's not do anything. But I have seen personally through most of my career, you can end homelessness for one person at a time. And I've literally worked with hundreds, if not thousands, over the years. I recognize the story that the speaker brought up, suddenly finding somebody unhoused where they're not supposed to be. I have not told this story before because it was professional complications, but I had a person from the homeless shelter stumble into an apartment that I was renting probably 15 years ago. And he had exited the shelter, started drinking, ended up in definitely the wrong place, was very surprised, as I was, to find him on my couch. And I knew him, so it was not terrifying for me. It was confusing for me to walk out with my bowl of Cheerios and be like, what? And so I gave him Cheerios, and then we got him to connect back with the program. With the right person, you can do that. You can get people to where they really need to be. But that could have easily been a police call. That could have been, you know, me freaking out and being terrified, and then him responding in kind and escalation. And it's important to remember that these programs aren't just purely altruistic in nature. They do keep crime down. And they do keep police available to do what they're really trained to do and what they're really trying to do, which is keep communities safe. And they do offer an opportunity for mental health providers and for outreach workers and for community health workers to engage and do their job more effectively. So I think it's a very important program for the city to be running for a warming station. I think it's equally important, as the speaker said, that we start looking at really addressing the lack of emergency shelter capacity that we see for Nashua residents. There are probably dozens, if not hundreds, of people who will be out tonight. And we need to make sure that we are responsibly managing our resources, and that includes making sure that we're intervening when people are in crisis. So again, I thank the speaker for volunteering. I thank the other volunteers who were part of the warming station effort. I thank the staff who very much had a very difficult job, and I think we should definitely continue that. On a happier note, I just wanted to announce that the Tree Streets Block Party will be June 14th. It will be on Ash Street between Central and West Hollis. So attention to neighbors. There will be a street closure between Ash Street, on Ash Street between West Hollis and Central on June 14th. We usually close the street around 11. Takes a little bit longer for neighbors to come out and actually move their cars. And then the event actually starts at 1:00 and then ends at 5:00. So anybody who's interested in participating, it's a free event. There'll be professional wrestling. There'll be performing musical performances in spoken word. Nonprofits are welcome to table. It should be a great time. And I think this is our 10th annual one, if not our ninth, so it's well received and it's a great event. Everyone is welcome.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So tonight, I wanted to speak a little bit about something that's been in the news, which is Medicaid. There have been discussions, both at the New Hampshire State House as well as with Congress, in regards to cutting Medicaid funding as well as putting in work requirements for some folks on Medicaid. And so I want to discuss this in an intelligent way because you've seen a lot of back and forth, probably online, you know, about this. But I want to really bring it down. So the question is, who is it exactly that's receiving Medicaid? And this is the list from the New Hampshire Medicaid eligibility. And it's infants, children under the age of 19, pregnant women, parents, caretakers, former foster care, children, individuals age 19 and under. You know, they have, it's for individuals with blindness, refugees, non-citizens, seniors, individuals with disabilities, and individuals requiring long care services. And all of those things have different eligibility requirements. Some of them are income, some of them are based on your ability, or your, I'm sorry, your disability. So to put in a work requirement on some of these folks is ridiculous. Because the people who are getting Medicaid, generally speaking, have something that prevent them from working. That's why they're getting Medicaid. So when you hear, oh, we're going to put in a work requirement for this, what that really means is we're going to get rid of Medicaid. Worst case, on the, in the Republicans in Congress with their plan, they want to get rid of, they want to cut it. Billions of dollars. That's going to affect, and what that's going to do is not only kick people off of these programs, it's going to fill up our emergency rooms. And then in addition to that, it's going to cause some hospitals to close their emergency rooms. It's going to cause some providers to close their services and go out of business. And this will affect areas like, you know, Nashua may weather the storm, but it's certainly going to affect areas like Berlin, New Hampshire, places that are up north and more rural areas where they rely on Medicare funds to run these services. So this is what we're, this is what's at risk here. And now you may say, well, it's up north, whatever, right? Well, do you vacation up there? You ever go to the Old Man of the Mountain or see that, see, go into Franconia Notch and go to the basin, go hiking? Well, if the hospital's closed and you get injured, good luck. It does affect you. It affects all of us. And these are things that we need to care about, in addition to the fact that not only would it affect you, these are our neighbors. These are our friends, our family, who live other places. And it's going to affect Nashua, too. You're going to see longer lines at the emergency room, and we already know, if anybody's ever been there, how long you already wait. It's going to be even longer. So this is, this is, when you hear things like, oh, they're going to make people work to get Medicaid, yeah, that sounds great on the surface. But what that really means, in all reality, is that they're taking that service away, and they're taking the funding away from it. And therefore, that's going to shift costs onto all of us. It's going to make medical things more expensive, and it's going to, ultimately, some hospitals are going to decide it's not worth it, and they're going to shut down. And that's going to affect the economy of small cities and towns across the United States. So in addition to that debacle that's going on, I had a personal experience. My wife, as I've noted before, is battling cancer right now. And she is on a treatment that is specialized for her type of cancer. And we were down at Dana Farber this past Friday. And Dana Farber is a partner with Harvard University. And Harvard University has been in the news for losing funding by the federal government because they won't give in to the Trump administration bullying them. And I say, good for them. And I want them to hold steady on that. But what that means is it has consequences for people. Now, nobody's been laid off yet down there. But in addition to the research cuts that are happening not only at Harvard but across different universities in different places, including the FDA, this has been delaying drug trials. It's also been making it harder for people who are like my wife to get into drug trials, which could potentially extend their life. So while the administration battles with Harvard cuts cancer funding, folks like my wife wonder, is there enough people at the FDA to get the next treatment in line so that I can have a lifeline? Or is that going to be held up because they fired half the people that work there, and by the time I need it, it's still waiting to be processed through? That's what's happening. That's what's happening right now. Her doctor kind of danced around it without saying it, but that's what's happening. And so we pray every day that the treatment that she's on now continues to work because the options aren't that great afterwards. But they could be. They could be. There is, there is a trial that's very hopeful. And I'm hoping that there is enough folks still left working at the FDA to get that through by the time my wife needs it. Because otherwise, she'll run out of options. And this is the reality that we are living under. It's not, you know, you see the pictures of Elon Musk, the video of him with the chainsaw. Well, that chainsaw might as well have come directly at the head of my wife and millions of other people out there who they continue, continue to go after. Poor people with the Medicaid, sick people like my wife out there. And there are countless others, business owners who are now facing, okay, great, he cut the tariffs to 30%. While they're still facing a 30% tariff, there are countless people being harmed by this administration. Countless people. I don't think anybody, anybody who voted for this man wanted any of this. And so the question that you have to ask yourself out there is, is this, was this what I voted for? Was this what you wanted? To really think about that. And I encourage everyone to do so. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of items tonight. I want to start by recognizing two high school students from here in Nashua, Minakshi Dwaraka and Salome Castillo Valencia. These two were named Senator Maggie Hassan's Granite Staters of the Month for the month of April. They were recognized because they started a free coding class that they offered to students here in Nashua through the Arlington Street Community Center. It's a great opportunity for kids throughout Nashua. Students have the opportunity to get hands-on introduction to block coding, basic robotics, game design, and computer safety. And as we all know, these are valuable life skills they can build upon in the future, develop careers. The class has been very well received. It started very small, but it's grown. Many kids coming in each week. It's certainly one of the highlights of my son's week. That's what's keeping him engaged tonight while I'm here. And just as a parent of a student in it, I would highly recommend to anybody in Nashua with their students interested in this kind of field, go and check it out. It's a, it's a great stepping stone. It's a great starting point to see if this is something you're interested in. So congratulations to Minakshi and Salome on this very well-deserved recognition. On a sadder note, I'd like to offer condolences to the friends and family of Kurt Booton, who many may have heard was killed in a tragic accident on Kinsley Street this past weekend. Mr. Booton was actually a relative, a close friend of mine. And he was regarded as a beacon of positivity to a lot of people in the greater Nashua area, as well as a talented barber shop singer. A lot of musicians in that family. The circumstances of his passing are really upsetting. I think they speak to some of the needs that we still have in the city for pedestrian-related infrastructure. But I want to just take this time to recognize him and offer my sympathy to his friends and family. On a brighter note, Dr. Chris Bellamentry will be holding a cleanup day this Saturday from 9:00 until noon in order to tidy up the grounds outside of the school. Summer's coming. A lot of kids in the Crown Hill neighborhood use Dr. Chris playgrounds as sort of their neighborhood playground. But winter's also just left us, and it leaves behind a lot of grossness. So anybody interested in helping out is invited to come by with their own yard tools. Building will be closed. You won't have access to the schools. And finally, just a reminder that tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, our own Mayor Donches will be holding the Ward Seven Town Hall at the Dr. Chris Cafeteria. I invite anybody within Ward Seven or outside Ward Seven to join us. I'll be there, along with at least one of our state representatives I know is attending. And if you're feeling really ambitious, I invite you to join myself and the mayor as we make the mad dash immediately after from Crown Hill to Nashua North for the budget hearing immediately after. That's all I've got.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I just wanted to let everyone know that there's going to be a trail day at Mine Falls Park on Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Lincoln Park entrance. This is a great opportunity for people who enjoy the park to participate in the cleanup of the park. I think people, most people know, a lot of people don't know, don't realize that, that, you know, the city cannot afford to clean up a lot of our parks with the staff that we have. So a place like Mine Falls Park really depends upon volunteers to keep the park the jewel that it is. And if you have the opportunity, the Nashville River, with the recent heavy rain that we've been getting, the Nashville River is roaring through Mine Falls Dam. And so it's a, I was there Monday morning, and, you know, the sound of the water and the view of the water and the mist of the water, it's really something to, to the view of the water and the mist of the water, it's really something to enjoy. And so if you have a chance, go and take advantage of it. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. So just a few things to go back to Alderman Clemmons's words. I worked in the Medicaid insurance company for a couple of years, and I listen to a lot of calls, and I'll tell you, a lot of people, he's correct, they cannot work. And so that would be, you know, a huge requirement for people that need that care and that insurance. Going back to what we were talking about earlier, you know, it's, it's still staggering to me that we have to be worried in the city if we're not white and we're legal, and we're a legal immigrant in the city. We should be a safe city to live and to breathe and to go out and not be scared to go to the corner store, not be scared to go to the grocery store, the movies, or wherever we're going to go, right? You know, it's, it's just sickening that people, I can't imagine having to live that way. You know, I'm, you know, obviously white, so I don't have to have the fear that other people may have. And I'll tell you right now, if you're siding with this side, history is not going to be kind to you, and you're on the wrong side. It's just not going to go well. On a couple other notes, Alderman Senate brought it up, Mr. Booten. I did not know him, I know somebody that sings with him, and so I also give my condolences. But what I want to speak about there also is, I've seen an increase in this, and I've also seen an increase in people saying things about it. And I know, I think, I believe, this was a drunken driving case, but speed in the city, going through red lights, going through stop signs, is increasing. And as leaders, we should absolutely be sounding the alarm in our words on this, because it's going to get more people killed or hurt. And, you know, I would keep saying it, the highway's brutal, and I know the state police do a lot of, more of that monitoring, but it's getting worse every day. I think people have thrown the rules out the windows, because we don't have any rules anymore in this country, right? We can do whatever we want. So I think that's been thrown out, and I think there's going to be more people that get into massive accidents. And so I hope that we can do something about it. I don't know what that is, but hopefully, you know, we can get more police out there and hire more. I know we're down, I think we're going to be down about nine, once these new recruits come in. But the more we can bring in, the better. And the last thing is, and it was brought up before we started tonight, projects in the city. I wish we would get more updates on projects in the city, and Director Cummings, I think, is still back there. Like, I asked, like, is the HVAC fixed yet? And I was told by Council Bolton that it wasn't. And so, okay, we appropriated that money. Are we waiting for parts? Are we waiting for someone that can do it? And what about all those other things we appropriated? And how are they coming? I did see today on Facebook, though, that the Hunt Building has scaffolding. So after two years of giving money and appropriating money, we got scaffolding. But I hear it's not being done till later in the year. So what is the holdup for all this stuff? And so I would like to really get, like, can we get updates once in a while on the money that we take out of the pockets of our citizens and put into these projects? I'd really like to see that being done, so we can go back to our constituents and say, "Here's what we appropriated, and this is why." Because it doesn't feel like it's any cooler in here than it was, you know, last summer. So, thank you.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to kind of make a comment about the cars and speeding and so on. Just yesterday, as I was coming off of Hills Ferry onto Concord, and apparently, the two motorcycles that were behind me were not happy, and one decided, "Why bother staying on the road?" and went onto the sidewalk instead to reach their own. Thank goodness, it was right by Greeley Park, and thank goodness, there was nobody on the sidewalk there. This is kind of, I guess, what we're coming to, to comment to what my colleague-at-large said about the cancer, as a person who just lost their husband to cancer, because there wasn't a treatment, no longer treatment path. I feel your pain. Sorry. I said I wasn't going to do that, but, um, that's not what I want to talk about. What I did want to talk about is Public Works is going on June 14th, is going to be doing a foam recycling collection day. It's something we've never done before. It's something brand new. Guilford has a foam recycling where they actually take foam. There's only certain types of foam that they accept. So on June 14th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, at the Four Hills landfill, in the recycling area, they're going to be accepting all-sized coolers, they're going to, the meat and produce trays, egg cartons, any color, the packing blocks that are around, like furniture and so on, plates and cups, food clam shell and trays, and coffee cups. They need to be clean, they also need to be free of any kind of tape and so on. They won't accept the bubble wrap, or soft squishy foam, as they call it, or egg crate foam layers, or craft foam, or foam board insulation, or anything like that. I've been told that it's on Facebook, I haven't found it. Commissioner and ex-state rep Dutzy has shared this with me. I'm going to share it with Donna, Donna Graham, and ask her if she will put this in the minutes so that we can have it. It's a flyer, so that it'll become part of the, part of the minutes, so that we'll have it on there, so others can see it. But the, our Public Works does have a phone number and so on, for people to reach out to them. But they're also looking for volunteers that are willing to put it into the box cars, and they're going to build, bring it up to Guilford, and then Guilford actually crushes it, puts it into these little blocks, and it gets used for other products and so on. And Guilford's using it with other communities. It sounds like a really exciting project, and I think it's something that Director Foto has said might be able to be used for other things and so on, so. But I will share it with Ms. Graham. So, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, real quickly, this Saturday, the Brian McCarthy Memorial Foundation, in working with World Academy, is having a family STEM Day from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, 138 Spitbrook Road at World Academy. There'll be robots, there'll be drones, food trucks, face painting, nitrogen ice cream, electricity, hands-on activity, there'll be a fire truck there, and other things that kids are really enjoying. It's free to all and open to all, and ask as many people as can come and enjoy all of the things that are being done by STEM here in Nashua, which is science, technology, engineering, mathematics. Thank you.
Alderwoman, Kelly?
I can't believe it got all the way to me before I got to, no, before I got to talk about, the budget hearing is tomorrow night. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that we have our budget hearing in Nashua High School North Auditorium at 7:00 PM. I always appreciate that the citizens get to come and participate in that. We've been working really hard on the Budget Committee, and there's a lot that we hear from every single department each year, and they work really hard. So, looking forward to that. I have two other pieces. I did want to mention, I know we went around after the mayor's remarks, but I thought I'd hold mine till the end, and I just wanted to, you know, give my voice to support of him meeting with citizens. I know I called him early in January after the first executive order came out, and I was really concerned about fear, and that people were going to stop sending their kids to school, they weren't going to go to the soup kitchen, that they might not go to the hospital. And, I mean, I'll share, as an alderman, I went out and got a passport, and I carry it with me. And I think that that is a striking thing to have to say in this country right now. So I do appreciate that Nashua has really done the work, and has been working through different community services, making sure that legal citizens know their rights, and that we are, that we are, you know, standing within the laws here in Nashua. But that is not actually what I wanted to address this evening. I actually wanted to talk a little bit about a part of our meetings that I enjoy immensely. And I guess it's, I mean, maybe it's partly because I'm chair of personnel, but I always love when people get to come up and take the oath of office. And in that, I'm pretty sure Mr. Bolton says agreeably to the charters and rules, I think you say it in your sleep. You must, right? But I think, I want to take a serious point here, because we all take that oath in this chamber as elected officials. And I don't know if people all heard this, but the President of the United States last week was asked if he thought he could, should uphold the Constitution, and his response was, "I don't know." We are marching directly into a constitutional crisis, and he does know. He knows, and he's testing the waters. He wants to know if people will speak out. So elected officials can't stay silent, or it continues. The courts cannot bend. If citizens look away, we'll lose everything that this country was meant to be. So the Constitution does need to be upheld.
Okay, committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Well, as was just stated, tomorrow's the public hearing on the budget at 7:00 PM in Nashua High School North. Also, on May 22nd, at 7:00 PM, Nashua High North, is the Joint Special School Building Committee.
Anyone else? Committee announcements, Alderman Lopez?
Yes, because I mentioned the Human Affairs Committee last night, you might have thought we wouldn't be meeting again. Incorrect. Last week, or last night, we did the presentations from the different nonprofits who are doing CDBG applications. And then this Monday at 5:30, much earlier than usual, so everyone take note, we'll actually be trying to figure out how to divvy up what we think might possibly be the funds we're getting for it. So it's hard enough doing math when it's a fixed number, when it's an estimate, and, you know, then you have to try to divide it among all equally worthy projects, it's a challenge. So feel free to come in, make your voices heard, or check it out on YouTube. I think the presentations that were done last night were very educational as to what nonprofits are doing right now in the city of Nashua, as well as some of our city departments. So we'll be meeting next Monday at 5:30 here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder, Thursday, June 5th, here at 7:00 PM, P E D C, a lot of hot button topics, Mohawk zoning conversations. So mark your calendars, come in, speak your mind.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow, which is Wednesday, May 14th, the Board Health is meeting in Room 208, second floor, here at City Hall.
Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, I just, if I could through you, ask the chairman of the Budget Review Committee, so tomorrow night is the public hearing, and then I noticed that next week, there are two budget hearing, Budget Review Committee hearing, Budget Review Committee meetings And one is labeled trust funds, and the other is labeled wrap-up. So is the wrap-up session, and I don't remember which day that is, but is that when the committee will vote on its, what recommendations it's going to make to the full board?
Yes.
And what day is that?
That's, Donna, is it Wednesday?
That will be Wednesday.
Yeah, we have a lot of meetings. So yes, that's the time when people can make motions to add or subtract from the mayor's budget, and whatever's passed, that the Budget Committee will move on to the full board for final passage. I believe that's on the, following week, the full Board of Alderman meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the May 13, 2025, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:54 PM. Thank you so much, everyone.